This is the May tenth, two thousand and twelve meeting of the Citrus Planning Board. First item in at least to accept the agenda.
Well, we're gonna try to amend it by putting on a support letter for that Cohasset Cituitet Court study.
And so we'll put that under eight thirty, at eight thirty?
That's good.
Under own business?
Yes.
New business?
New business.
So with that modification, do we need, I need a motion?
I'm so moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Super, thank you. First item on the agenda is a special permit accessory dwelling unit for four to five Mordecai Lincoln Road. The applicant owner, the Hales, trustees of the Realty Trust. We'll also, in conjunction with that, do a Form A for the same site. Michael, introduce yourself.
Good evening, Captain. I'm Rick and attorney Michael Hayes, and I represent Will Hale, two of our trustees. Uh, the main house, which is forty one Mordecai Lincoln Road, where Mr. Hale resides and has for some time. Recently, the abutting piece thirty seven Mordecai Lincoln Road was on the market, and he purchased that home. His original plan when he purchased it was just to tear that house down and keep the land as a reserve for future septic needs. But the more, when he got inside the house and saw that the condition was a little better than he thought it was, and he changed his plans, and he was asked that the, uh, that I present this accessory dwelling special perm request. So I'd like to just real quick, um, run through what the existing conditions are up there. At forty one Mordecai Lincoln, uh, the lot is twenty one thousand seven hundred square feet. And the frontage is a, uh, his home there. The thirty seven Mordecai Lincoln also has a hundred eighty feet of frontage and thirty one thousand six hundred and forty five square feet of land. It's a two-bedroom house. This house that forty one is four bedrooms. He also pending the hopeful approval of this board, and it's in your package, and is on the plan, he hopes to build a three-day garage and a small addition to his house on forty one Mordecai Lincoln. That addition in garage will, uh, go over the existing lot lines. So that's why pending the approval of the board, we have done the Form A plan and providing both lots on that Form A plan. Without that addition, which again is in your plans, is for a garage, a utility room, and will add to, uh, the existing home, and turn the garage into a future living room. Providing that work being done, the livable area in that home is thirty seven and hundred nineteen square feet. With the proposed work to be done, it would become forty four hundred and fifty one square feet. So the percentages under the bylaw currently, the smaller home at thirty seven is thirteen hundred and ninety nine square feet. So as it exists now, the smaller home of what we hope will be the accessory dwelling is thirty seven point six percent of the square footage of the main home. And with the proposed, uh, new addition in garage, the, uh, living area of the forty one Mordecai Lincoln will be forty four fifty one, and it would then mean the accessory dwelling would be thirty one point four percent of the, of the, uh, of the main dwelling. Part of the process, in this process, and with comments from Jennifer at the Board of Health is septic concerns. There has been designed and ready to be submitted, um, an addition, a, uh, new six-bedroom septic system, which is what Jennifer's looking for. And again, that is, uh, been designed and would be submitted pending the hopeful approval of this board. Finally, if, uh, if, if the board pleases, I'd like to just go through the, the special permit procedures and conditions in the bylaw and address each, each one, or would that be appropriate?
Sure.
Okay. Under five thirty point two, paragraph A, the accessory dwellings shall be complete, separate housekeeping units that function as separate units from the primary structure or dwelling. And there, as you can see in the plan, says no proposed changes to the existing thirty seven Mordecai Lincoln, which is the smaller two-bedroom home that will be a separate entity from, from the main dwelling, which is currently known as forty one Mordecai Lincoln. Sub-paragraph B is not applicable, I don't believe, because this is not, uh, the, the, there's no accessory dwelling proposed created within an existing structure or a structure used for businesses. So I don't think that applies. Only one, number C, only one accessory dwelling unit shall be created within the single-family house or on a lot containing the single-family house. Again, there's only one proposal, and that is for the smaller, or thirty seven Mordecai Lincoln to become the accessory dwelling. D, um, it requires, in a detached structure, uh, that complies with all setback requirements. It does, and, and both dwellings do by way, however, of the average setback rule within our bylaw. So those, they both are conforming as far as setbacks. And the, again, we're not gonna be adding any, uh, any additional proposal on the existing home. The garage is going away from the street, and I've reviewed the plan with Neil, and Neil does not feel that there's any need for any zoning special permit, that he can, uh, he can approve the building permit upon its submission, again, pending approval of this board. So, uh, we believe we, uh, we're not making any change, excuse me. We believe we meet it by way of average setback. E, the accessory dwelling shall be designed so that the appearances of the building remains unchanged as much as feasible. There are really no change other than, you know, some lipstick on the building to the smaller accessory dwelling. There'll be nothing other than, you know, clean it up, paint it up, fix it up. No structural change. So we believe we meet that requirement. And again, F, I've already gone through that when complete, pending this board's approval, the accessory dwelling will be well under the forty percent limit under sub-paragraph F. And, uh, G, at least two private off-street parking spaces shall be available. We, uh, there's plenty of parking on the lot and proposed, so we feel that that is not an issue. Eight, the design and size of the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, et cetera, and meet all other bylaws. And again, we are very concerned with the Board of Health, and we will comply with that pending approval and with the septic design, and, and there would, again, there's work proposed on the forty one Mordecai Lincoln, and there's cleanup work done, being done at thirty seven, and under the, under the auspices of, of Neil, and the town will be well protected in that regard. And finally, that adequate provision shall be made for the disposal sewage. Again, we have a six-bedroom Title V system design and ready to be submitted if we get the accessory dwelling. With me tonight is Rick Anastas, who works for Mr. Hale and is in charge of his properties and, uh, and, 'cause Will Hale is left for a, a business trip yesterday, and he cannot be with us tonight. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Super, thank you.
As the board approve it.
Thank you. Laura?
Uh, it's a kind of interesting application, the way it, it works. I'm gonna kind of maybe approach it a little bit differently from the way Mike did, but the proposal is to add on to, this is number forty one over here. To add on to forty one, when the addition is done, there'll be a new garage and some, um, other changes. The existing garage is gonna be converted to, uh, living space. And that addition is gonna go over the property line, which effectively combines the two properties as one lot. But, you know, you're gonna be doing that as a formal, you know, Form A endorsement anyway. And once you do that, you can't have two houses on a lot, but you can do it by the accessory dwelling method. So it kind of, I think, fits very nicely with that. The only comment that we received that was really of any substance was from the Board of Health, and I think they would like to have a condition about the septic system, because the, uh, the existing system for, um, number forty one is only for a two-bedroom house, because that's what the records had shown. So they really wanna see that, at least, you know, for that one, the four-bedroom, and since it's gonna serve both, you know, for the six, so.
Do we know what the status of the existing septic system for the larger house is? I mean, is it Title V compliant now?
I don't believe so. I believe it's a, um, it's a school.
It's an older one, although there is a, um, uh, big storage tank.
Yeah, I'm looking at the leaching.
I'm sorry. She says there's a nineteen ninety four permit for installation of a fifteen hundred gallon septic tank.
Okay. And I'm, probably should be clearer, but I'm not, in terms of what you can do within the riverfront area, the buffer zones that are shown, that kind of thing. Is that the, the location of the, of the new septic system, Mike? Is that gonna be in, in any of these sort of sensitive areas? So it's gonna be up front? Pretty far up front.
There's a little, um, rectangle of dashed lines on the left-hand side.
Oh, this thing that says SAS?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's outside the hundred.
Yep.
And the, uh, the only other, the only work proposed, or this being under discussion down there, because again, Hunter's Pond is at the bottom of the hill behind the properties, would be perhaps some vista pruning, but that would be under the auspices of the Conservation Commission. But there's no work proposed at this point within, within the hundred foot.
Actually, you know, that's supposed to be a two hundred foot from the riverfront area.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if that's, um, if that's a misplan or I just, oh, two hundred. Yes, so the work would be, you know, I think the Conservation Commission would have to look at it.
Yeah.
Yes.
But where it's a septic system, I mean, I think they'll, you know, they won't really wanna hold that up unless, uh, you know, they would.
Okay, because the two hundred foot's right out, way out in the road.
Yeah. What I mean, it's a conditionable thing.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Nico?
Is that, uh, the area where the proposed new system's going in, like, is that gonna be, is that, is that currently grass? Is that currently a grassy lawn?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The, I think Lauren answered my question. I was a little confused at first. The reason, the reason for combining the lots is because the owner wants the garage space addition and needs to do it this way as opposed to keeping them as two separate units. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and, again, his, his plans changed, 'cause he originally was just gonna tear the house down and build the septic system where the house is. But upon further reflection, he felt it a, um, a, a, a more substantial compound would be more to his liking, so.
The, the average setback you're talking about is based on the other dwellings?
On either side.
Either side of them?
Yeah.
Okay, and the, um, the, in terms of those setbacks, the only thing I was looking at, and you may still comply, but is the, that little corner, if you look at the fifteen-foot line, um, where the garage, the, the proposed garage attaches to the front of the new house, there's that little triangle that kind of juts out over that. Is that already calculated into that average setback? Or is that sort of, Neil said, good enough, you're heading that direction away from it?
Well, yeah, that corner is comprised with the average setback.
It does, okay.
So your proposed garage will actually be a quarter to behind it.
Right.
From where it starts, it's not gonna start right at the point of, uh, the ninety-degree point of the building. It's gonna start behind it, and so that's what went into Neil's thinking there.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure you didn't need to cut that, jut it along the line, but as long as it complies with the average, it's fine. I think that's all I had, so it's fine.
Yeah, dear?
Yeah, I think that answers all my questions. I was wondering about the, um, riverfront area, but that's a con-con issue, so.
Eric?
All my questions been answered.
Bob?
No, I'm good. I jumped in early.
No, not to worry. And I am all set.
Um, Mike, I just wanted to ask you before I pass on the motion for, you know, assuming the board is ready for it. What did you say was the area of the accessory dwelling? Because in the assessors' records, it says twelve hundred square feet, and you had some other number.
Um, we had calculated the, the livable area.
Yeah.
Uh, thirteen hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay. Okay.
That's what the engineer had calculated.
It's under the forty percent now, even the forty building, so it's not, we don't need to make it conditional upon, right, building.
Yeah.
procedurally, should we do the Form A first, or we should do the accessory dwelling?
Well, I, I popped in the Form A as a condition, but you can do it either way. I mean, I think it, it makes sense to do the Form A first, too.
Okay. It's, because if you don't have the Form A, then you have no.
Right.
So, do you wanna make a motion, and I have it, right? I'll endorse, and it's, right?
You want to endorse the Form A for, uh...
This is my cue.
Mordecai Lincoln Road on forty one and thirty seven Mordecai Lincoln Road in Cituitet, Mass.
Now, there was the discussion about the condition for the, uh, the septic. Does that go in the Form A? That goes in the accessory dwelling?
Yeah, we, they can't condition the Form A. So what we'll do is we'll vote the Form A, and if the Form A is approved, then in effect, we'll then, we'll go with the special permit for the accessory within the conditions there.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we now have a Form A.
Okay.
We proceed to the accessory dwelling.
Just watching there, um, I, so the percent was where the thirteen ninety-nine, thirty something?
Thirty seven point six.
Thirty seven point six.
Okay, so say thirty-eight.
Oh, with the, existing with the proposed?
The proposed.
The proposed, it would be thirty one point four.
Okay, there we go, okay. Okay, yeah. We might have to change if I say something about it being dependent on this.
I move to make the following findings of fact. Number one, on April ninth, two thousand and twelve, the owner of the property applied for a special permit for accessory dwelling. Number two, the plans submitted with the application are a Mordecai Lincoln Road floor plan and A and R plan of land at forty one, forty one Mordecai Lincoln Road, Cituitet, Mass, assessors' lot twelve four twenty-six and twenty-seven, revised dated four sixteen twelve, prepared by M.R. Surveying, Inc., for William M. Hale of forty one Mordecai Lincoln Road. Number three, uh, I think I was crossing this out with that. The area of the house proposed for an accessory dwelling is thirteen hundred and ninety-nine square feet. The floor plans show the floor area of the primary dwelling with proposed additions to be forty four hundred and fifty-one square feet. Number four, the floor area of the accessory dwelling is thirty one point four percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling, including the addition, with the proposed first and second floor additions. This meets the area requirements of five thirty point two F for accessory dwellings. Five, the site plan by M.R. Surveying, Inc., shows a driveway and free car garage for the primary dwelling and a separate garage and driveway for the accessory dwelling. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Six, the setback is considered to meet the requirements of the bylaw because the average front setback provision of the Cituitet zoning bylaw, section six twenty point four A, will be used. Seven, the applicant has submitted a signed notarized statement that he will live in the primary dwelling and his successors entitled will live on the property. Eight, the application meets the standards of Cituitet zoning bylaw, section five thirty, for an accessory dwelling special permit, as long as the proposed additions to the primary dwelling are constructed.
You can kind of drop that out, sorry about that.
Scratch eight. Uh, eight, eight should be.
Well, you can just stop after.
The application meets the standards of Cituitet zoning bylaw, section five thirty, for accessory dwelling special permit.
So you guys, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the findings of fact?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the accessory dwelling special permit for thirty seven and forty one Mordecai Lincoln Road with the following conditions. One, the applicant should meet all requirements of the Building Department, Board of Health, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies. Two, property of forty one Mordecai Lincoln Road shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the existing dwelling and the accessory dwelling as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and their square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. Three, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Four, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Mordecai Lincoln Road Floor Plan and A and R Plan of Land at forty one Mordecai Lincoln Road, Assessors Lot Twelve Four Twenty-Six and Twenty-Seven, revised dated four sixteen twelve, prepared by M.R. Surveying, Inc., for William M. Hale, trustee submitted with this application.
If you can drop out.
Five, the applicant will be required to update the septic system to comply with Title V per the Board of Health requirements. The system must be twenty feet from the garage. Seven, or six, no on-street parking shall be permitted. Seven, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded with the registry of deeds within ninety days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Eight, this special permit shall lapse within, within two years of the date of issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine.
Do I have a motion to accept the conditions?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Your permit's approved, your Form A's approved. I will sign the Form As this evening, and you'll be available tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll have to come to town hall tomorrow.
And then the filing will probably be done within a week.
Great. We appreciate your time very much, and thank you all. Thank you, Laura. Thank you.
Quick package, second one. Slightly ahead of schedule, so we have the opportunity to pay bills in two minutes.
Great, bills are good.
Okay, get Nico before he retires. Retirement's not a function of age anymore.
No, just means.
Two minutes for April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, this year, one?
Yeah, that's it. Just one sentence, okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll pay some people. An allotment addition since I'm retiring tonight?
Oh, well, I'll think of a few.
Uh, move the following bill, pay the following bills. Uh, one for four hundred and twenty-six dollars and twelve cents to Community Paper Company for legal ads for a special permit in Stock, one twenty-nine Stock Bridge, uh, as well as this thirty seven, forty, forty-one Mordecai and seventy-seven Border Street. Second bill for six hundred dollars and fourteen cents to R.E. Hogan William for reimbursement of the planning board guarantee account and engineering consultant fees for Dream Old.
It's Bill Hogan? Oh, yeah, I'm just.
Uh, another bill for a thousand dollars to, uh, Jack McGrath for reimbursement of the planning board guarantee account for engineering fees on, uh, five fifty-six to five sixty-eight First Parish Road subdivision. And a final bill for two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to John Howland for reimburse, reimbursement of the planning board guarantee account for engineering fees for the village business overlay district special payment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll sign those. Now, we have four minutes. We, planning report fit in four minutes?
Um, sure. I was gonna talk a little bit about Walnut Tree Hill, so I don't know.
You better.
Just pretend you aren't listening.
Uh, if you want, we can hold that to the end, and then as we.
Yeah, you better? I, oh, there are only four minutes.
Yeah, okay, um, I don't think Ann is coming tonight, so I could talk about that three-year corridor study.
Okay.
I got a, um, email this week from Clark Brewer, who's a member of the Cohasset Planning Board, and they're very interested in getting some traffic improvements on Route Three A because of all of the development that's taken place there, that they, they've got, um, I think they've got a wind turbine there someplace. Um, they've had the Avalon development, they've got the, um, development, the train station, and traffic flow there is, is getting jammed up, and they're looking at ways to try to streamline that. When they were thinking about this study, they were doing it in the, um, MAPC kind of, um, meetings, and Anne Burbine suggested that they include Cituitet down to Henry Turner Bailey, because that's kind of a difficult intersection. Henry, you, you know that one, that's, yeah. So, um, so that's the way it's configured now. It's, um, from the, the, um, mixed-use development where the MBTA station is in Cohasset down to Henry Turner Bailey in Cituitet. And they would look at ways to make those intersections safer. They look at ways to incorporate sidewalks, um, some kind of bike-friendly, um, accommodation, you know, all those types of things. And, um, they are looking for letters from the planning board and also the Board of Selectmen. So I did draft a letter from the planning board, and this, uh, funding is through the state transportation program, which is a very kind of slow program to get funding out of. And the way it looks now, they probably won't get it this year, but they might, they might possibly get it next year. And one of the things that would help them, they, well, they didn't say, the state said when I talked to them, is to highlight some of the development that's happened in the, in the Cituitet Business District, and also to just mention that there is potential for expanding that Cituitet Business District, which I think is not really a big stretch to say that, because the Economic Development Committee has certainly discussed that among other locations on Three A, but this one's, you know, maybe a little bit less, um, difficult for people, because it's up near, you know, there's a business district there already, and it's already happening. So, um, so what they might do is to just look at Three A in the context of maybe having some more business development, maybe not. But I think within the scope of this, you could look at what parcels really could be developed for business, you know, which ones are, are, you know, too, too, uh, high a percent of wetland that, you know, could never be developed. So I think we'll, we'll get something out of this, I guess is what I'm saying. Whoops. So I have a draft, and maybe you could just pass that down.
So this is just a letter of support for the application?
It's just a letter of support. And, um, I think it would be appropriate for you to take a vote to support it if you, you know, feel like you, you can support it.
Yeah, I talked briefly to Ann. I'd asked Anne Burbine if her schedule permitted, you know, maybe she might wanna come down and just talk to this. But, um, in effect, I had talked with her previous, and, and, draft letter before it was formally sent out, uh, looking for the support. And in effect, what it does is, Cituitet is the, I would prefer to think of the head end of this area, the study that they're looking at on it, and I think that it makes sense to have Cituitet involved in, in part of the review, to make sure that whatever we do is consistent with what they're looking to do. And I think there's an opportunity to have what we're looking to do included in their planning. So I had suggested that we come back up and, uh, write, write a letter to that, to the support of the, of that, uh, of the effort. I think this is a draft.
Looks good to me.
Yeah.
I have no problem at all with it. So I need to, why don't we formally vote a motion to?
Would you send this letter? That was written? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want me to sign one of these, or do you have the original, or does it matter?
Uh, I, I just have draft written on this one, so I'll get you an original. Actually, at the end of the meeting, I can print it out.
Okay, you do that, and I will be happy to sign in.
Okay.
Which brings us to exactly eight o'clock. And the next item on the agenda is site plan administrative review for Seventeen New Driftway, purpose to discuss changing the ice house conditions. We're very fortunate to have, to have Design Review with us tonight. Thank you for coming. What I may ask, while you're guys setting up, is maybe to kind of give us an overview, just kind of a discussion on what took place in the design review, which kind of set the stage for the activity. which kind of set the stage for the activities, what I call their homework, and then we can come back and hear from them, if that works.
Um, well, we were asked to take a look at the ice house because originally when we reviewed it, um, we talked about doing wood shingles, um, the building. And it came out and it was more of a, um, generic, um, something you buy without a lot of work done to it. Uh, so we got together, we go off lead and kind of what we came up with, I'm not sure if you received any of the sketches.
Yeah, we, this, Mike's memo and the sketches have been passed around to all the board members. Yep.
Um, well, what we talked about is more, um, the purpose was to hide the, there is some mechanical equipment on the rooftop. And we were trying to think of a way to kind of camouflage, um, the mechanical units, but also make it aesthetically pleasing. Um, and also the, the wall we drive by, the, this is a side to side, it's kind of like a blank, um, wall. So we were trying to, you know, put some ideas to kind of break it up. So we came up with, um, you know, doing, to break up the wall with, um, mechanics on the side and the front. And also along the top to kind of close the mechanical units or items. What did you, um, kind of a fence, but this would be, um, sort of, um, thought through the, um, canvas enclosure around it. Um, we discussed doing some stone, pick up the glass or the back. But then as we talked about it, it sounded like that was a good possibility, was appearing not to decide the building. And I think we were gonna go back and it's like there's a little bit more work that was done as far as, give you an idea what it's gonna look like. But the discussion as far as colors is still up in the, um.
I happened to attend it. I think it was, it was a good working discussion. I think there was a lot of, a lot of give and take and a lot of, a lot of good ideas and a couple of mine.
So we, we took the sketch and we, uh, we met with Dorchester awning company and they were.
Why don't we just, why don't you introduce yourself because we're, we're currently being taped.
I'm Don Bradlin, I'm running Quarter Road.
Thank you, Dan.
And we, uh, took the sketches that design review had come up with and we, uh, had it represented, what was the owner of the company came down. It was very helpful and, uh, pretty much imitated, uh, what, what was in the, uh, design, which was, um, one of the challenges was how to adhere all this to the ice house. And, uh, he came up with a, you know, a, a, a great solution. And, um, what it does is it provides the awning effect, but also a, the screening, uh, you know, on the top. Um, and this screening would be, um, on all, all sides. The awning would be, as you see it pictorially in the picture, uh, but the screening is actually on the opposite side, uh, as well. And what, this is a very high-quality material, uh, that's being proposed. It's a, you know, a marine, you know, grade, um, very durable. Um, and what it allows us to do also on the other side with the screening is it has a grommet fashion attaching to posts. There'd be three different sections of it. Would allow us to, um, detach one of them to get access to the equipment if we ever had to, uh, you know, service the equipment. So rather than having a, you know, a gate or something up there, we're able to do it with the actual, uh, you know, material. Also from time to time, the material might be, um, you know, some kind of cleaning or whatever down the road. So, you know, you can easily remove it. So we have a little bit more of sort of a nautical, uh, you know, a nautical look. Um, I could describe to you, um, perhaps the detail of it. The awnings and vertical screens, um, uh, manufacturer awnings, this is a, uh, on a quotation, that are the same size as the existing awning and include integrated vertical posts that project above the roof. Um, note that the existing awning will need to be modified to include the vertical posts as well. The awnings will be two feet high and project four feet, same as the existing front awning. The vertical posts will project thirty-six inches above the roof. And they'll be, and they will be thirty-two inches, thirty-two inch high screen panels that are mounted in a banner-like, uh, between the posts. The awning frame and the posts will be attached to the building using the method and hardware that the building manufacturer provides. And what this is, this is, uh, stainless steel bolts, bolts with an inside plate. We would be, we would order those from the manufacturer so that we would adhere to the same kind of, uh, method as they did by putting the front awning on. Uh, we would use the same, uh, the same hardware. Um, and this is available, you know, in a, uh, a sun brother, what they call sun brother view or a tight weave, uh, mesh. And then there's, I quote here again, it's pretty much screens for the third side. He made that separate. But we would do, be doing the same kind of screening, uh, with the banner-like approach for the, uh, for the opposite side. So, I mean, I think, I, I, I was pleased when I got it back and you can't tell a hundred percent from, you know, a rendition like this. But I felt that color-wise and everything, it was attractive, it was crisp and clean, and it gave the right kind of screening that would be needed to, uh, to offset the, the equipment. Um, and, and it's feasible. It's something that we're, we would be able to do, uh, which was, uh, uh, which was always the challenge. So, uh, that's where we are, you know, so far with it. And, uh, it fits, um, you know, it's from a budget point of view, it's a little bit of a stretch. But, um, you know, I wanna do it, uh, because I wanna see it, uh, you know, um, as bright as well. But again, we want to use only the best, uh, you know, products, uh, of the material that, that we can get.
Super.
Because there's some other issues, but I tried to match pretty much as much as I could to this sketch. Um, you know, as to what to get that kind of an effect of the banner and the awning as well.
Okay.
This would allow us also with the awning, would allow us to put lighting underneath the awning to light up the sidewalk, you know, at night.
In.
On both sides, on, on, is that one side?
Are you gonna paint the structure a different color?
That, I, I'm leaving that, I, I wanted you to see it as is first because number one, we've had a lot of compliments already about the color as it is. And that being positive, and I wanted you to take a look at it with the awning because, you know, our first concern was screening the equipment. And, uh, you know, that's what it looked upon as the priority here, um, and getting away, making a little bit more decorative, uh, few, uh, you know, roof. I mean, that is, that is, that those are the sort of the Situate colors.
Yeah.
That, so, I mean, there, that's where I'm at with it, you know, so far. And the blue, the blue awning seems to work, uh, well versus some of the other colors that are available.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
I, I saw you guys huddling over there. We got two, two design reviewers.
Yeah, so I, I'm Hal Stokes. Uh, I apologize for being late to the hearing, but, um, I, I am on the design review committee too. So Laura and I were just talking. I think that the, uh, the color scheme was, you know, I, I thought, uh, that you might appear, um, with a couple of, um, ideas for different color schemes that, um, could be, um, shown tonight. And, um, I thought that was kind of how we left it. So, um, I, um, I would be interested in, in discussing changing or modifying the color scheme that is presented here in this sketch to be something that might, um, be a little less, um, harsh. There was some talk at our meeting, I think, about the, about, um, matching or if not directly matching, being in the vein of, um, in this photo that we have here, we don't see a utility building that's sort of adjacent to this, kind of behind, um, behind, um, the view that you see here. And that had a slightly more of a taupey color or something like that.
Right.
And, uh, that was one of the color schemes that you introduced, uh, in our, at our, uh, session. And I, um, and, and we also even talked about possibly, um, taking that lower portion, which is maybe thirty inches off the pavement there and making that a slightly, maybe complementary, but in the same vein, but a little darker or something. I know we can't do the, 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 the stone, but maybe just, again, to try to break up the stance of the wall.
It gets us right back to this. We, we, I feel we're segwaying into this and I wanted you just to see it as is before we did that. It, I tried to have actual photos or whatever showing some color combinations, but, uh, it wasn't successful, okay, getting them because it seems like, you know, the person's software and even, even the fellow, even the fellow at, um, from the awning company said it was very difficult to superpose these colors on there and everything. So I thought we'd have to go by the swatches, knowing what the combinations were already decided on.
Oh, okay.
And this would be for the.
And it has a slight preparation to it.
Right, that, that would just be on the top.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And maybe the board wants to see that too. I'm not sure if you want to get.
Yeah, there was a.
I'm not sure if, does the board want to get into that deep, level of detail?
There was a, there's a material on the, there's a material on the top. It's, it's, it has these very, very tiny little holes.
So the wind on the top.
That's a certain.
It's a screen.
These were the colors that comes in, okay? The navy, the green, the taupe, and the gray. There were a couple of other colors, but they weren't in this book. But they were just more variations than the gray or the taupe.
Do you think Dan's have the color of the, of the big sample you had, the medium?
Yeah, we have that, we have that.
That might be helpful. Does that the color of the dance studio?
It's a, that's actually a shaper base.
Uh huh, nice, yeah, makes sense.
Is this, is this a cotton or a corduroy one? If, if you know.
So, it's some roll. So it's acrylic.
Okay.
Uh, this is the stuff that, you know, the good, the good stuff they use on boats.
This is shaper base. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Was that the, that's the color of the?
That's the color of the dance.
Well, that's, and that is, um, that's definitely a darker shade than what you currently have painted, uh, you know, the current paint job on, on the unit.
Oh, yeah, that's stop one.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Now, we had picked, yeah, we had picked, uh, SDHC, which is the same paint that's on the building. Now, what, what, there was one that we had to crumple at that.
Well, we were looking at the other colors, um.
You did your taupe.
We were thinking of maybe not necess- depends on whatever color we decided on, whether it had a little bit more gray.
Matching the leaves behind there and kind of sucking it into the woods a little bit.
Well, as long as the leaves are out, but there are some evergreens on site too.
The other thing about that.
Only if those four you can work.
It's expensive. They can even go with seasonal colors.
I think it's more expensive than that.
You do it once and you make the color. I'm not sure how the best coordinate this whole meeting here.
If we can come up, maybe everybody could come up.
What would you suggest, Phil?
Can just, maybe we can, you, we, I can suggest maybe we all just gather around the table and then we can, that may work out better. I don't know from a cable standpoint whether that works, but at least it puts us all in, in, in that thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But why don't we, why don't we come down?
Yeah.
One of the questions that I have at least for the board before we go too far, is conceptually, does this design make sense?
I think it does so long as the colors look right. I mean, I think the idea was to make it look less sort of fast food-like and a little bit more disappear into the landscape, which I know we've given you some examples of other ones we've seen around the country, different pictures. And a lot of them use, you know, strictly earth tones and things like that that kind of, uh, blended into the background a little bit. You know, the stark white and the bright blue really kind of screams fast food. And I know even the Dunkin' Donuts across the street, which obviously is fast food, there was some effort put into making it look a little bit more residential anyway. And since this is such a prominent location when you come down the street, I think the more we can do to subdue it a little bit. I think the, um, the building in the background is like a good example of, you know, if you match something a little more along those lines, it'll kind of blend with the, the rest of it a little bit better. So, so I think painting the buildings critical. I like the design of the awning and everything. If we get the colors right, I think it would work great. And I like the screening and everything. Seems like a good solution.
I think that, that, I think that works out well. So I think if we just gather and we pick out the colors, then I think that we.
Just the one thing, kind of a nippy key thing on the canopy, um, it shows like a scallop and we were thinking more just like a straight.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Turn the words from my mouth.
And that was discussed, but we didn't.
We didn't write it down.
We didn't come to a decision.
Which scallop versus a straight?
It's a little, it's a little busy with this color.
Mm-hmm.
This, the question, uh, Mrs. Brown came up over the, the scallop edge as opposed to a straight edge here. Was there any, um, reason why we couldn't do a straight edge?
I can't, I'm sure a straight edge is feasible.
Probably easier.
Yeah.
The other question I had, is it possible to wrap the awnings together at this corner so that it looks like a, uh, basically a mansard roof?
At a forty-five.
So that it's miter, essentially, yeah.
So that they're connected, yeah, so that they're mitered.
Well, I wanted to raise that question too.
It becomes a hip roof at that corner.
As we noted in Mr., um, in our chairman's, uh, sketch, he didn't bring the corners together. He had two separate awnings. Right.
And I think we were talking, he can open, see.
Well, that was, that, that was one approach and then, and then your, um, and then whoever did this design where you joined them together to make it more mansard-like, like Mr. Vogel says.
I'm not sure.
And so I'm not sure if, uh, what the actual construction will be and I don't want to tell you actually.
I would think that if it was well gathered, then you wouldn't have the wind factor.
Well, yeah, I just don't know if they can get a, you know, member out to support that for a good reason. That's probably the act, uh, issue. To get, uh, one of these supporting straps.
Well, it looks like it's actually two. It's not like, are you talking about?
Yeah, same.
Cause it looks like there's just.
Well, they filled that in with color, but I don't know whether.
Well, I think you've got ends on those, on those triangular prism shapes, but the ends don't join. So you've still got two, two triangles.
It's two separate awnings.
Right, if that's, if that's an important issue, maybe that can be answered.
We're working with.
Important to me and it probably cuts down on cost.
With an awning for, for every.
I think if it can be done without a big expense, it would make sense, but it'd be a critical piece of it.
It'd be a little, it'd be a little sleeker, but.
Yeah, and on the awnings, we're talking about, these are gonna go all the way around the building?
The, the, the awning part would be on the two sides, the front, what you see there, the, on the street.
Okay.
And then the other side would be, uh, along the other property on the other side would be the, uh, the screening.
So you're only gonna have the, um.
Screaming on four sides, awning on two.
Screaming on four sides, awning on two?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that, that to me is gonna look a little, uh, not the best, I guess, when I think about it, especially on the side. If you're looking for a Duval Dance Studio, it's gonna look kind of half-done. I'm, I'm not so concerned about the backside. I don't think there's a neighbor there that looks right at it. Is there, sort of the trees and things?
Actually, there is. There is a neighbor off over here.
I mean, if you've got just two roofs hanging off of two sides, it's gonna look half-done.
Well, that's no big, it's, it's no problem.
Okay, I mean, I guess it would, to me, it would make more sense to have a uniform all the way around.
Yeah, well.
There is an issue on the third side, on the fourth side.
You can't really do it.
Yeah, it's, it's designed to be a driver. The back part of the building, that, that, what happens is there's the sidewalk and the access is along the front. It's got a very narrow piece in the back that, that gives them a, a concrete sled that accesses the, the equipment in the back.
Yeah. Some of that equipment in the back is overhanging the roof. It sticks out.
We have the possibility of boats, large boats coming in around there. So we, I really didn't want anything protruding out of the building.
Right, if you take four feet off the back, you're not gonna have a driveway left behind that.
So you're talking about the, the back, the long backside anyway, but what about the facing, there's equipment there? Can't do that.
That's the end of these.
There's parking.
This equipment here comes back down on the back of the building.
Yeah, there's equipment. Do you have the angle on that?
I don't have the, I don't have the picture.
The old picture you had.
Comes back up and it comes down. It comes down, so you're gonna need to have, so you have that as well as access to it.
Well, that's too bad, but that's, that's.
Is there sidewalk back there? Is there sidewalk back here?
I think there's a lot of.
There's a couple.
I think there is.
A couple of sidewalk, cause there's, the door is on that back.
It's not like a.
It's not, it's not as wide as the, the front side. Add a couple of things, um, the, I mean, let me say, it's, it's a big step forward and I'm, I'm very happy about that, so on the whole.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm, I think we're close, but, um, I was worried about the wind resistance, we answered that, I think that looks fine, the, um, the, the colors, um, which I think we're still talking about, uh, I'm not totally sold on, I agree it's the blue and white, not just situat, except that there's nothing else blue and white except for the oyster shells, so, um, that, that still sort of bothers me and I, I still would go more towards the, the earth tone concept and if it comes in the four colors I was seeing, I, I'm, myself, I'm leaning towards the green, but, um, the, the, the paint color certainly is still an issue for me, I still think we need to choose something other than white. I prefer to see darker earth tone, if that matches the building, I think that would be at least certainly.
That would help, if we had like the awning with some form of green and then the, the base was matched that, something like that.
If you had, if you had a green awning and you had this tan that matches Duval, that makes a lot of sense to me and I would agree strongly with that bottom thirty inch base layer being a different darker, darker brown or something.
Offsetting a little bit, just to offset.
Yeah, just to give you a two-tone effect that.
It contrasts, so there's a contrast.
I'm not a designer, but, you know, I know well enough that my wife wants two different colors in the dining room for a reason.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
So, uh, does that mean? So the, uh, the, the, uh, the other thing I was looking at, when I saw the sketch, I, I really liked the idea of, of some kind of, of texture, I understand you can't adhere things to the building, but when you look at that toning effect, even if you textured the paint.
Sure.
Faux texture or something, but again, that's, I'm not worried too much about that.
That came up at our meeting.
The, um, the signage, um, we were talking last time about, about because you were going likely be not using bright white and bright blue, maybe actually having a different sign and I don't know if you guys have gone anywhere with that.
Well, it would be a different sign, but we definitely would paint the, that's in a metal, that post is in a metal frame and it's a wooden sign that sits in a middle, metal frame and I would envision that whatever we do, perhaps with the, uh, with the, let's say the bottom portion there we were talking about, would probably be the frame color.
The rea- the reason I was asking was that we had mentioned the concept of maybe putting the signage on the face of the building as opposed to outside of it, just to.
That's, that's going to be, again, uh, probably not possible because of, of trying to get, those walls are eight inch thick.
Of, of actually attaching it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanted to ask that, that's, um.
That particular sign has been there for quite some time.
So I, I, I would say, I would say if we're going with a different look to the colors of the building, I would hope that the signage would match it, but, but that's obvious, I hope.
The sign has to complement. The red lettering, for example, and stuff like that would have to go to a different color.
The, um, the lighting, um, on the sketch, again, there was lighting portrayed, I thought that was actually not only a good safety feature in terms of, of night use, because this is going to be open late, twenty-four hours.
Yeah, well, we, we already have lighting, actually, that comes with the lighthouse that's supposed to go, would, that would go underneath the awning, illuminate the awning, so at night it would look kind of nice with the material lit up.
Okay. So that's, that's, I just wanted to know if there was going to be some lighting.
Definitely going to have lighting down on the sidewalk there, yeah.
Um.
And in the front, also the front as well.
The, the front and the side, the, the two facing sides.
Yes.
The, um, the last two things, I guess, timing on this, I know you're interested in the timing on it, but do you have an estimate of the timing on the awning, construction and installation and what?
Well, I think, I think, I think what it is, it's, it's, it's when we place the order and until we, we have the colors, then the color, then we, then it's a go, you know.
I, I assume, I mean, I, I kind of assumed from the last meeting that we're looking at, at least your hope would be to try and approve pending construction with the, the timeframe, so.
Sure, I mean, if we can agree upon some basic things here, you know, that it's okay, the design's okay of the awning, but we need to choose another color and we need to, you know, match that up with something appropriate on the ice house. I mean, I'll put, I didn't guarantee that we'll do it.
I just, I, I'd like to know.
That's where I'm coming from, I think, I think in, in fairness to the applicant, I think what we do is if, if we reach closure on what this thing should look like, and it takes them a month or two months to do it, I don't want to hold them hostage, sit there and say, you get two months before you open it up.
Correct.
What I would do is, is, is ask Neil to issue a temporary permit that would be a temporary occupancy permit to a time certain, so let's say it would be seven one. And at seven one, then it would, all this work would have to be done to, to, to continue with a temporary permit, if it's not done, then you get your permanent when, when, when things are done.
Right.
So that sets, it puts a stake in the ground and says, I'm going to, you know, at a time that says you can, you can meet that date and work towards that date, that you'd have a temporary permit and to the extent that you didn't make that date, then you'd lose your temporary permit. So I think that's, and we can work out that timing.
Sure, anything as far as the first thing that could be done, of course, would, any deci- final decision that would be made on would be color, that could be done immediately and that could be the first thing that's actually accomplished, um, while the awning is being ordered.
But let's, let's go through the, see, get some comments from the board to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what it looks like.
And then my last, my last comment was, was, was greenery, I mentioned it last time, um, you know, I was down there today, actually, uh, at Duval with my daughter and, uh, looking at this and, and looking at, um, the burger bar and they were doing their spring landscaping today, so they were remulching the beds along the, the further driveway and such and, um, if you look in the back where they're putting their new patio in,
Mm-hmm.
um, they've got, um, they've got seven or eight fairly good size, six, seven foot, uh, evergreens in pots.
Yeah.
That are back there, if you look on the front, they've got a few by the front door, they've got some shrubbery down the side, you don't have any real way to do shrubbery, but, um, I still think when you paint it and if you went with browns and greens, it would, it would be, uh.
I think that brings it into it, it brings that.
Please to bring it in together, so whether you add a couple more green items or whether you simply try to match what's already around there, I think those are the two things I've been.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy with the design, I think it's, the colors are critical to get it to kind of blend into the background a little bit better and I, I'm for sort of earth tones and going that direction and I think that the base of the building makes a natural brick already, you know, if you can't do the brick there, you could paint that like a darker color, it'll take some of the mass away from the side of it too and I think the stark white has to go and the bright blue has to go and, you know, get something a little more, um, like the background building there. And I think if we pick the colors tonight, I mean, I'm good to go on the design and I like the, getting a temporary CO out so you can get started and.
I wanted to get clarification on the, uh, the awning, what do you call it, the?
Scallop.
Scallop. That, the reason why that was chosen was because we thought it had to be more of a homing effect, but it, and you, the, the straight was a little more commercial, but.
Yeah, I think it makes it look a little more fast food like to me, like a hot dog stand kind of look or something versus like.
The scallops.
Yeah, the scallops, yeah.
This is a sale.
Yeah, versus, I'm trying to make it look a little bit more, um, residential, I guess.
Well, and if you're going for nautical, it's, uh, you know, you wouldn't see that on a boat.
No.
That's what I was thinking.
That's, that's, it's no, uh, they get tons, they have tons of options, so.
Yeah.
Most of them.
But I think we've got to, we do have to nail down the color a little bit, I don't want to.
We're willing to.
I think we pick them tonight.
I don't want to be guessing.
I think we're guessing.
Pick them tonight, can you?
Let's see what Bob, what.
Um, on the awning, basically, I think it's, okay, it's an improvement, I think, to have those ends open and I'm, I'm not sure why I say that, it's just a little bit less fussy and I don't know if that's possible with those ends that you've, from closed are, are hiding structure, for example, that comes back to the building wall.
Could you clarify Bob, what you mean by that?
Um, yeah.
Side panels?
Yeah, like that, I think that's an improve.
Do you have a, the strong?
On the side of the ends, you've got to try and with these other ends.
Or should one of them open and one of them closed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would open them both, I'd open them all.
Just see the triangle on the end?
Just have the slope coming out.
I mean, there's going to be a brace.
Open back.
Top, but no sides.
Right, right, exactly. I mean, to see the structure is going to be kind of interesting, it's like spreaders on a boat or something.
I understand what you're saying, I don't care. I mean, those materials, those costs, you might have to say, so.
Probably depends how they get your furniture.
That's right, right, there's some that are probably designed to be open and some that are probably designed to not.
Well, yeah, you would see the frame.
Right, because these, all these are going to be designed and built as trusses, one-piece trusses, okay, structurally.
Yeah.
So there's a triangular, there's a triangular truss, even if there's, it's not a one-piece frame, it's a triangular frame.
Out of what, stainless steel?
Stainless steel, so you would see that.
It's going to be lovely, in my opinion, that would be a very interesting detail. I like the idea of the, of matching, uh, that sort of beige, I like the idea of painting the base in a darker brown, I would vote for the green, uh, fabric. Uh, I would also vote to have the bollards now shown blue painted the same color as the fabric, the green.
Anything but blue.
Anything but blue.
What about safety green?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't want OSHA, safety green.
Kind of like, kind of like hunter green, right, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to.
Like, whatever.
Yeah, or the brown is a dark bottom base layer.
Yeah, either one.
Just that, I mean.
I, I, I generally want to match the fabric and I think actually a little spot of color along there as opposed to the brown or the, or the taupe or whatever we're talking about, uh, for the base walls, wouldn't be a miss, would, would be a decent little kind of spark. Again, we all have perhaps different opinions, but those are mine.
Maybe we pick the awning first and then go through.
Yeah, I would do that.
See what Eric has to say. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to put all of my trust and faith into the architectural review committee and what they suggest, uh, and so I would say, tell us what colors you think would, would work best and we'll go with those and where they ought to be.
That's a great idea, I'd say we just defer, so. We'll take ownership of it.
Well, we're asking, we're asking for an opinion, tell us what you think. Let me chip on first, uh, just a couple of comments, one is, is that I, I like the design, I like the design a lot, it works out well, uh, on it. My, my gut reaction is the same as Bob, I would probably leave that end open, uh, on it, the fact that you're seeing the framework doesn't bother me because you, if you're underneath, you're going to see it anyway. And that, I would get rid of the scallops, uh, the, the two-tone building with the, the darker around the base and what I would look to do is, is to make the awning and the balayards the same color, because I think that brings your eye, takes it and breaks, you look to the middle of the two colors on it. The sign, I think the sign needs a lot of help. And then to the point that I made with, with Nico is this, I think if we come back up and we figure out a timeframe, once the colors are picked, as to when you can do it and then we can, uh, we'll, we'll nail to get to a, a tem- temporary permit so that you can be operational on it. We can generate some money to pay for all the stuff that we're asking you to do. Now, having said that, let's refer properly to the color people, figure out whether we're earth, we're brown, we're green, we're blue or what?
Earth, weather, fire.
I like the idea of the open canopy too, um, the one thought though, um, I think how he's going to light it, he's going to do strip fluorescents, right, underneath the canopy, so you'll be able to see those when you look through, so that might be a consideration, probably the conduit.
Yeah, that's true, you're not going to want to see that if you're driving on the road and see directly at the lights.
Yeah, that's the only, it might look. Yeah, that's the only thought on that, um, we did talk about doing like goose neck lamps down and those would, um, mimic the ones on the way to the burger bar, there's the goose neck lamps that come down there.
That would be nice, I wouldn't mind seeing those.
That would, it would change everything under the, under the.
And it would be over top and I did see an example, like I think, um, no more.
He wrote nautical, we wrote nautical lights, but.
But we were, we talked, yeah, we did, yeah, we talked about some sort of lighting coming down.
But where would they be?
Well, we were talking about, we could, um, now do one here on the.
Yeah, but that doesn't light up.
But that's the side, side, side mark.
So you're trying to get so the whole thing at night is all.
It's dark.
Yeah, for security and for, uh, safety.
What we could do is push small returns on the end to hide the light.
On the ends of the fluorescent fixtures themselves?
No, 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 on the ends of the canopy.
Oh, oh, I see.
Just close in twelve inches down.
Oh, because the lights are, the lights are way up at the top.
They're right up against the far end with highs plus.
So we can just close it.
Probably a decent idea.
Yeah, and you see, if the lights are attractive, then I think you would have it open and if they're not, you've got to close off the end, because it's supposed to the street, if you're looking right at fluorescents, it's going to kind of ruin the whole look, so. But I mean, I.
I, I really like the idea of fixtures out here, but I, I agree with Don that you want to make sure the sidewalk's lit at night so people don't trip over something and, and I also think that.
Are the fixtures.
The canopy comes out four feet.
Yeah.
So you're going to have to have a heck of a, of an extended fixture to get light back under the sidewalk, you have to be out there six feet coming back at it.
Yeah.
I just don't know how you do it.
Are the fluorescents going to extend all the way to the corners of the building or are they going to be, you know, s- s- I think they'd be several feet in.
Or it's set up with, with three, eight footers, that's, that's the length of the building.
Hmm, I think you'll get just the same, almost the same amount of bang for your buck if you do two eight footers and hold them, hold them in from the, from the corners and they won't, they won't be as intrusive. You got enough height there, so that, that light will spread.
It could land in your corner, because you're going to have an eight footer coming up to the end and eight footer going the other way.
And you can hold them back from the corners.
Doesn't have to be the whole way down.
But also the, the two four footers would give you adequate light for your sidewalk without giving you conditional light that you're putting elsewhere.
Also would cost a little lot.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think you need a tremendous amount of light there anyway, I mean, it's, other than the, where you're buying the ice, you're not going to need a ton of lights, I almost remember less.
Well, I, I mean, it is a walkway and, you know, and it could be someone who parks and where that vehicle is and walks up there, you know, to get a bag of ice, so I just want to make sure it's safe.
Yeah.
This is open twenty-four seven.
Right, that's the move.
So we got to be sensitive to light pollution too, because, um, it's going to be on when people don't want to see lights necessarily around there.
So we restrict the amount of, of fluorescents around the sides so that it's adequate, but not overdone.
Do they need to be fluorescent tubes or can, is there any other sort of form of lighting?
Well, it's just nice you can do it, I, I think with just few fluorescent tubes, you can get an illumination effect, you know, that's just enough, you know, without spotlight effect.
Right. I mean, one of the things we noted is nautical lights, which, um, I don't really know what nautical lights are, except, you know, the, those things that are like enclosed and they're sort of semi-dome like and they have a
Yeah.
little grate over the top of them.
And then you can put the, the new compact fluorescents in there and they.
You could.
And they run very economically for a long time.
Right, you could and it might enhance that, you know, nautical look, I just don't know whether you can adhere those things to the side of the structure.
You invented after a conduit to them and you can't do that internally, so now it's an external situation, I kind of like the idea of tucking the fluorescents up under it. Because you won't see the conduit or boxes or you won't even see the lights if they're held back from the ends.
You won't see them, right.
And you'll just get the glow on the canopy and the wash down the wall to the sidewalk, I think that's probably a decent idea.
There might be something you could do with LED lights that, you know, maybe, you know, not a whole, a whole string of them, but, you know, maybe, um, do something energy saving like that, so you wouldn't have to spend as much money on them.
Also, in terms of process, don't have to do it until after the awnings up either, or something like that, we have to decide that particular thing tonight, but why don't we do the awning color?
I need to have you keep coming back to us, so I think we should just finish it tonight, I think we're so close.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
I think the only thing that's holding us back is, is pick up the color of the awning.
Yeah.
And then the color for the base of the building.
That's right, the color of the awning, we know will be the color of the balance, okay, like you said, it'll complement that and then we need to get the, it's, it's probably, uh, one of these beiges, this lenox tan.
You need to pick three colors, right, the awning, the sidewall and then the base, and that's, then you're good to go, right?
Could you tell us the colors again that are acceptable with that, with that texture?
I don't know, I'm not a decorator.
No, no, but you had, you had, you had a texture that.
We were looking at, before, we were looking at, uh, like a, um, like that kind or that kind of awning, but that doesn't come in.
In the texture.
The perforated.
The perforated, right, so what comes in perforated?
It's just those, these four colors.
One, two, three, four.
There were a couple of other colors, but they weren't in this one, but they were, they were off shades of taupe or, um, green.
Yeah, it's not a bad color, you know, you, you might want to let them do this in daylight and, and look at the colors of the other buildings, at least for the. Yeah, just a shade.
With a gray, with a light gray building.
Like, yeah, like, I think, I think it's super.
And then a deeper gray, you would do squashes, you know, I mean, my wife is redoing a bedroom and ended up, you need squashes up in the wall and you're all like, this?
They're all different.
I'm very happy if you just prefer to, to Bob more on their opinion. So Bob, do you have like a, a strong preference as to, I mean, I'm.
Well, I, I probably would defer it to the.
That's probably the first.
I would do the greens. I would do the.
Because I think it goes more with the room, the devaux and the tough, like say, a Jason.
And that, the.
This is basically.
It's just a brown, a browner.
The only awning colors are the green, the blue, the gray and the taupe, so.
In your eye line when you, when you look at it.
One.
I don't.
Yeah, so moved.
We have a photo that depicts the, um, the shed that's along, you know, that's.
They wanna, they look at it after we've hung it up and they're not, but more.
And I look at it this time, I was like.
Just so it kinda get all kinda blind like a.
Curly have more meetings.
Yeah. Bring everything back. Don?
Uh, yes.
Don?
Al, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We're gonna adjourn for five minutes and you guys are gonna pick out colors and report back.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but five minutes is what you get. Five minutes.
Five minutes.
So you got, you got five minutes to pick out color.
Here's the adjacent.
Great. Can we cut the cable for five minutes? Well, this is all on cable.
This is funny, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I hope you feel very, um, yeah. Yeah, it's not live, but it's gonna be taken and played. Are you, um, feeling like you wanna do the master plan today?
Uh, I feel like I wanna do it here after the meeting.
That sounds good. I actually.
I'm not gonna give up on it. I'll, I'll come back.
Good, yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Right. Wicked.
The color, the color of the trim too.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Wanna go down there and start expressing an opinion. Yeah, that was good. You, you and Charles and Hustin, I expected the seat apart. Slowly, but it's coming. I mean, you know, progress every day. There's a whole list of things that we're.
This is what I would do.
So when we're able to sort of target some money from the sale of our old ones, so that we tend to a few days to move it along.
Really?
Boring, so it's exciting. Very exciting.
Why don't, why don't you want to have a building with. Rich elegance to it, instead of something.
You know, I feel like it's just, you, it's part of the problem is you're trying to mask.
I, I don't know how I would do that.
So more, it's like.
It's not intrusive.
It's a very emotional experience, more than just stuff, since they have to pull it out.
See, at first.
You almost, you almost can't do it.
It's making it disappear. So I mean, the building is disappearing in any color. You watch somebody put rich, that glass.
It's tough.
Then you go, it's still.
On Surfside, twenty-five years. Yeah, exactly. Plenty long enough. And the thing is, it was a tiny house. I mean, you saw it, it's a tiny house. It's got no basement, it's got no attic. We had the shed out back and we had some things in the basement that were next door. The stuff that came out of that place, it was like the old joke with the claws and the Volkswagen. They just, in the circus, just kept coming and coming and coming and coming. So the house we moved into was actually a little bit larger and it's got, it's got a barn and the barn's got a loft, a small barn, a small loft, still. But it's jammed. Now you can't even get in the barn. Yeah, it's awful. We'll figure it out. I think we just, we were not charmed anymore by living next to the ocean.
I think it should be darker.
Yeah, definitely.
Whether it's more storms because the climate's gonna change or. It just, it got a. I mean, there were some social pressures going on down there too. The, the street, the street really changed from when we moved there in terms of demographics and all of that.
Cause the HC color is that, uh, the enamel paint you need to put on the building.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an iron color, an iron.
Yeah, there was some of that, no question about it. Now, we're, we're very glad that we moved. We've got a beautiful yard and plantings and, you know, the kinds of things that we.
I'm definitely.
It's, it's neat. It's gonna be a great, definitely a good idea. Yeah. Yes. A few houses up. Oh, no kidding. What, what level?
To the dark.
All right. Yeah, okay. I know, I know where Maureen lives, so I know where you mean that. Now, we've met the people around us and they seem very nice. There's a, Carol and Tom Wall who live right next to the parking lot of the Baptist church, but off of that lot. She actually was a teacher of my son's. So that was a nice connection. And then the woman across the street is an English teacher at Marshfield. So, you know, it's, it's a nice neighborhood, it really is. We've had wild turkeys so far. We've had coyotes. So plenty of wildlife wandering down through the Ellis property, I guess.
I've been moving down on Cedar Point for the last six weeks or so and there's coyotes all along.
In Cedar Point, yeah.
You like the green?
I know.
The coyotes are, they're, they're hunting. It was, it was interesting seeing them walking along the breakwater, I mean, the white dirt.
That is interesting. And supposedly scavenge for fish and things like that along, along the shore.
I suppose so. But it was, you know, it wasn't where I expected to see them. They were very, very.
Well, you would here too, if you were afraid.
You can't, you can't, you can't see the fire on the side for the.
I like that.
I, I think this might be.
This would be the.
Yeah. They have to come up with something so these guys can get in their fur. Yeah, I know that, um, Don, the other thing is, I know that you're willing to.
I have, I mean, as soon as possible.
Whatever.
It was this color. Body, dealt this color, a little lower.
We found a flock in there. Meet that description.
It's gonna, like, the sun's on the.
Pretty interesting that that's.
I'd be saying where your heart is.
Good call.
I'm, I'm happy.
Really? Well, we'll fix that. Don't go. It's not, that's only the reason.
You know, I, I do have a gavel amongst my stocks.
What we could do is we get the awning.
So is that been five days?
We get some paint samples.
All right. The clocks up, right? It's like a game show.
Yeah, clocks up.
Burger bar closes at a certain time.
And I'm looking for a report from the committee.
Uh, Laura, do you wanna speak up or do you wanna?
Um, sure.
Okay.
After much discussion about colors, um, I think what we're leaning toward is the navy blue. And we talked about matching the Deval studio. I think it's this color here.
The HC forty-five.
HC forty-five. Um, but then a more discussion on maybe doing some darker tones. Um, so definitely the canopy blue.
Good, cause it gives us the stuff.
But then is it possible to do a couple samples or do we need to pick it?
I think we should pick it.
I think you should.
Just pick it.
I honestly think we wouldn't be able to tell the difference too much if you did it one day for the next day. Pick the one that you think is nicer.
I like those two right most ones, the dark, the two dark ones. Get, put the numbers down of the ones you're interested in. It might be more than.
I'm happy with those.
I'm fine either, I'm fine.
I'm more concerned by either one.
I'm gonna lean towards the, the Deval studio, because I think it's a much nicer look with the, with the blue awning.
And with the darker base.
And the darker base.
Here's your conduit.
With the, I'm, I'm against this color. So the, so the darkest on the bottom? Darkest on the bottom, the Deval on the, on the body and the blue awning.
I, I like those colors. I prefer the greens, but that's just me. But I'm not gonna hold things up.
That's, that's good.
Is, is the board concurred with the three color choices?
Yes.
Yes.
And what color is the baller? What were the ballers?
The same as the awning.
The navy.
The blue?
The navy.
They matched the awning.
The navy.
Yeah, you can, they're on the back of them, the colors.
Why wouldn't the lawyer, why wouldn't they match the base?
It could.
No, 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 they'll match. He's saying they're not gonna be the same color as the base. He's saying they're gonna be the navy blue. I, I thought that we should do it the same as the base, but Bob suggested making them the same.
He asked, why would the ballers match?
Yeah, that's what they said.
Something you run into them.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of. That's one of the reasons I'm concerned about people.
Okay, so I think we've reached closure. We got blue awning.
And blue baller.
Blue baller. We got the.
Deval.
The, the Deval gray or earth tones. And the dark, the darker tones for the base.
But we can give them this number too. This is the.
And we talked about, if possible, the open ends of the awning.
Okay, so the ends will be open. Lighting will be minimized on the other side. Instead of putting the, the three eight footers, you put a couple four footers. It'll be open on the end. Um, the sign, we're gonna need to come back up and figure out what the sign has to look like then. So we'll approve the sign tonight. Well, you'll have to come back for the sign.
Flat edge, not scalloped.
Uh, flat edge, not scalloped.
Yep.
On the awning.
The, the top part goes all the way around and the, the awning itself is on the, the coin end and on the, on the, the left side that you're facing the coins.
So that awning's just gonna be on those two sides?
Yes. And what else do we need?
Screening all the way around.
Except you, you really can't, um, I've got the picture of the back here somewhere. You really can't do the back very well, 'cause that, the, the.
Yeah, screen the back.
No, the back is the back.
Yeah, so it's gonna be the three sides with the.
Yep.
And then the back side, the light will be minimized because it'd be exposed. So minimize the amount of lighting, whatever you need for safety, but.
Yep.
Um, sounds good. Now, the question is, how long, how long will it take you to put that together?
Suppose we'd like ninety days.
Just to. Yeah, I'd find out the delivery of the awning.
Just to make sure what, what we order, we can get.
I don't think that's a reasonable amount of time.
Okay. So what we, we'd look to do is we'll, we'll work with Neil to get you an occupancy permit from.
Which would start from when we get the temporary.
Yeah, we get a temporary permit that we give for ninety days.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, you could, you could issue that tomorrow. But the question becomes is. So we'll talk with Neil about issuing the occupancy permit, looking to have that done. And then ask him to issue it for ninety days and then a big review and see what it would be. Continue the permit, you know, full occupancy permit. What else do we need to decide?
Um, what do you wanna do about the sign in terms of them coming back? You wanna have like another whole meeting on just the sign or can the design review look at the sign or?
Seems to me like if the colors, if they just do colors that complement the other colors, I mean, that's my main concern.
Let's have it come back to, have the design, I guess from the board's standpoint, we want it to be coordinated with the, with everything else and I'll let you work with design review to come back up and do that.
Right.
So, designer review the plans, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I just have a question about the ninety day. If, if it doesn't, you know, if it's not achieved in the ninety days, what, what happens? I'm not just.
It's a temporary occupancy permit in the extent that that's only good for ninety days. At the end of ninety days, if he doesn't do the awnings and everybody else's would have disagreed to, then in effect he loses his occupancy permit and he's closed.
So he'd have to actually close.
He has a wonderful machine to hold water, so it doesn't make ice.
He's not gonna make warm water. Okay, I just wondered, I just didn't understand the.
So that's the reason for the temporary.
I understand.
Yeah, let you open for business for ninety days. If everything's done, you're good to go and if not.
I will be acting like this as quickly as possible.
Do you want me to go over all this stuff again, just to make sure we have it? Okay, uh, the fabric for the awnings is gonna be the navy sombrero. The bollards are gonna be painted as close as possible to match. Um, the awnings are gonna have the ends open. They're gonna have a flat edge, uh, not scalloped. Those ends are gonna be open on two sides. Underneath, there're gonna be two four-foot light fixtures. The body of the building is gonna be, um, Benjamin Moore HC forty-five shaker beige. The trim would be HC eighty-eight Jamesboro Gold, it's called, but it's, you know, that one there. Um, the approval doesn't include approval of the signs. The banner, that top part is gonna be on three sides, except the back, and the, um, there'd just be safety lighting to the back. The awnings are gonna be on two sides. Um, they'll be, you're recommending that Neil issue a temporary occupancy permit for ninety days, which will be reviewed, um, prior to the end of the ninety days?
Perfect, yeah. We'll probably review it at sixty days to see what.
Okay. At sixty days.
One thing about that back on color, you know, the gold.
Jamesboro Gold.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a definite, is it? If we just did a darker color, but not darker like that, but not, but if it has a little bit more, that has a little bit more, um, yellow in it.
You, you don't like that color?
Laura, Laura suggested we make this three times darker and show her a sample.
But I think we wanted finalized, right?
Yeah, I'd rather just finalize tonight.
Yeah.
We're okay with that. Do you have a particular reason not to, to finalize it? Do you not like it? Is there a reason? No, I would just be a company. She wanted to see that.
Laura wants to see the hood wall.
Well, I, I don't wanna be a pain, so, you know.
I think we might be overdoing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll.
Instead, instead of a regular color, it would be three shades darker.
Right.
So there's no color.
Right, I know, that's, that's kinda the safe way to do it. It's kinda how usually my own woman do it. Um, but, I mean, whatever.
You could put, you could put that in, the word exists.
Why don't we just. What are you suggesting, instead of providing specific color, you wanted three shades darker than.
You could do two or three shades darker, but.
Three shades darker than the shaker beige. That's how it should be worded.
Okay, so instead of the Jamesboro Gold, it's gonna be a color that'll be two to three shades darker or three shades? Do, do we just wanna say three shades darker?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause that'll work.
Whatever that means.
It'll work.
Yeah, exactly.
And Laura, we stated that the ballers would be the color of the awning.
Yeah, we did. We said that up at the beginning. Yeah. Okay.
Some move?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hold over the paper?
Aye.
Go forth and prosper.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Go forward then.
Go forward.
And then you, the sign, you'll come back up when you coordinate your sign, you bring it back to Laura and she'll bring it back to the design review.
Pardon me, sorry.
The sign?
Yep.
Right, when you have a proposal for the sign, and what, how that's gonna coordinate it.
Yep.
Then bring that to Laura, we'll set up a meeting with the design review and then we can work with that.
Okay.
Great, okay, cool.
Great.
Nice job.
Nice job.
So those of you around the design review committee, when you have your next meeting, will you tell them for us, thank you?
Sure.
We, we really appreciate the time.
That's the time.
You've got two thirds of them right there.
Yeah, two out of three.
And he's in Syracuse, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Don, thank you for your willingness to work with us.
Thank you, it's been, you know, thanks Laura.
You may never do another ice house again.
Certainly, I'll be a pro now, you can just roll this out, right?
That's right, this is the, this is the new platform.
Yeah, yeah.
But I was, I should contact them and sit there and say, for slight fee, if, I will, you know, I will sell you my design and that you can put on other ice houses and just.
Right.
Right. It, you know, it, it is, it becomes doing what it is because it's standing alone. You know, often these buildings are adjacent to another building.
Yeah, yeah, by town meeting, yeah, yeah.
Not the same.
I appreciate your time and your effort.
Okay, thank you, everybody's.
Seeing as the Blossom Street was accepted at town meeting?
Oh, okay, you gonna do a booth though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, move to, uh, refund the balance of the surety of eighteen hundred dollars plus accrued interest for the Boothill State subdivision at the request of John Yelenowski developer, as Blossom Street was accepted at the annual town meeting, April eleventh, two thousand eleven.
Second, hold over the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
We gonna do master plan or we gonna?
I don't think he wants to do.
We discussed the master plan at the burger bar?
You can do it, no, we can do that.
We can't do that.
I think that's.
Well, no, I'm off now, so I wouldn't be a form anymore.
But we will, we will not discuss the, the master plan at this, this time, what I'd like to do is, we've got one tree to deal with.
Well, we, we can or we can.
Well, let's just.
Okay, you wanna do that real quick?
Yeah, Laura, I'd like to do that.
I recuse myself, I think we're headed out after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I recuse myself permanently, I'll wait in the hallway.
So we've already, oh, am I taking?
So what do we have?
Okay, we, we had a pre-bid conference this morning with John Chessia, travelers representatives and a couple of contractors that we really hope are interested in bidding on the job, there was one of them that said, you know, that seemed like it was not gonna really work out for him, but at least one seemed really quite interested in it. They were struggling a little bit because some of the things that John Chessia likes to do were really over and above what, what other towns ever do. The main one being when the, um, um, when the bays and the sub bays come in, the, um, whether they're, well, bank gravel, I guess, has, has more issues than, um, you know, than gravel that they purchase, but, um, he wants to test it on site as well as testing it at, you know, the gravel pit or wherever it comes out. Yeah, it seems like a really good idea, they just had a lot of issues with it, so hopefully they can see their way through that. But they're, um, you know, that's what the meeting was about and hopefully within about three weeks, three to four weeks, we'll have a settlement agreement for you guys to, to sign.
Okay, what time does the bidding, period close on it?
I think, um, I think it's gonna be within about two weeks.
Okay. So the intent is to basically close the bidding and come back and use that number, that contract as part of the final settlement?
Yeah, yeah, it's all gonna be tied in with the settlement, yeah, and the contractor's gonna sign the settlement agreement also, so.
With work, ideally to commence immediately following the signatures and they're looking to start this.
Well, town council wants the selectmen to sign it also, which means it's gotta get on the selectmen's agenda, but I'll be trying to get that going, um, you know, as soon as they sign it. So that's that.
Super.
Okay.
We've got a motion from Bob, I see, so.
A motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Hold over the paper?